Glad to call our Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on June 15th of 2021. And Commissioner Andrews can lead us on our invitation.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your being blessed with this. Lord, you've given us a beautiful day. We thank you for the rain that we had last week, and that brings the harvest, the rain and the sunshine. Lord, we thank you that we are blessed to live in Harris County. We are just living an abundant life here. We thank you so much for it. We pray that you would give us wisdom to make good decisions tonight, not just for today, but for the future, and we are praising for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's stand and join us with a pledge of witness.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the regular minutes from the regular session of June 1st, 2021, and the minutes of the joint PDC meetings of May 27th, June 3rd, June 8th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have asked Nancy to make an addition on the... You did that, didn't you?
Yes, ma'am. But I didn't have that.
Oh, you didn't have that? It's just something that's asking about what she went down on the last one. And also, there was a... Just she had to go to Chairman Zondo once and so... We asked her to put it there, but over there, I would like you to...
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I was seconded, but on June 3rd, I was not here. So did that correct you? If Becky was saying, correct her motion.
Yes, that's what I think.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
I had you with that question. It was all the minutes, so it's mine.
Excellent. Okay.
Do we have an appearance of citizens to see here?
No, sir.
The next item on our agenda this evening is old business. This was dealing with the applicant Josh Carter from CBF Holton. This was dealing with the location of lot 101, Mill Glen subdivision. The public hearing for this application was held and closed during the June 1st meeting of the board. Therefore, no further comments can be received regarding this special use permit application. Action regarding this application was tabled upon a motion by Commissioner Irons and seconded by Commissioner Andrews, pending a response from GDOT as to if there is a way to reduce the speed limit in order to allow driveway access from Georgia Highway 315. And I do believe that we received that information from GDOT and still said that there was no access to be given from 315. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, but first I would like to make a few comments if I may. This is located the district in which I live. I have received four emails as... And they're the same emails, I believe, that the Board of Commissioners have received. That is the only communication that I have received about this particular special use application. We were provided a list of commercial establishments which could go into this commercial, on this commercial landing. And I looked at it, and that is without Board of Commissioners approval. And then we were urged, they would just have to go pull permits and we can start building. I studied that list. I have talked to some members of our state legislature delegation. I studied that list over and under. I have looked at this situation 15 ways from Sunday. And I am going to make the motion that this special use be approved based on the fact, and my logic is that this is the least disruptive use of that property commercially. And that is my opinion. Without, I have the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I want to second that motion. I've been out to this property numerous times. I've looked at the property. I know there are some safety concerns, but the more I look into it, I don't see those safety concerns being as imminent as people make them out to be. I know there's some issues about site, your distance site. And then if you look at the location of the driveway in order to be placed, well, further back down the hill, I think that leaves plenty of site distance. Mr. Carter spoke about having the access would have... The gate would be further into the access, which would give people an area to pull off of the main drive into that location. So I want to second the motion. Is there any further discussion?
On the information that we have, the last sentence of that last paragraph that begins with GDOT, right there in the middle of the page, it says, "The access spacing from radius return of the proposed access to the radius return of Mill Glen Way would need to be 230 feet." I don't understand that language. Somebody have to explain that to me.
That's what he said. We didn't explain it.
Randy, anybody? Sorry, I didn't hear it and explain that to me.
Maybe is Russell? We do have Russell now.
Yes.
Hey, I'm here. What is the question?
Are you looking at our agenda, Russell?
Yes, ma'am, I have it up.
The paragraph that begins with the GDOT. So go to the very last sentence. It says, "Mill Glen Way," they're talking about the question in the existing access to the eastern commercial side, and "Mill Glen Way," the access spacing from... And this is what I don't understand. "Radius return of the proposed access to the radius return of Mill Glen Way would need to be 230 feet."
Yeah, I'm looking at that. I'm trying to decipher it. Nancy or Randy, was this the information that Brian was able to secure for GDOT, Brian Williams?
I got that from GDOT myself.
Okay, you got it directly from that?
Yes.
So does it mean road frontage?
Nope. He's just talking about the radius.
I don't understand. I mean, I don't understand. So I don't...
I did email back and ask him under what circumstances, and I have not gotten any kind of response.
On the GDOT website, they say that if it's lower to 40 miles per hour, that there would need to be 200... Listen, 180, I think, being the road frontage space. Oh, frontage. I had it, but I don't bring it. Pardon?
I think it's 180.
180, road frontage. If the speed limit was reduced to 40, that on that circumstance, there could be access from 315 if they would reduce the speed limit. So you have there other commercial right there at the end of that road, and of course, the intersection right there at the end of that road, and all of the growth that's coming as those people from the grove get their children to the schools right down that road. So the traffic's only going to increase there, and I would think that the speed limit should be reduced, not for development's sake, but for safety's sake. And I've gone down into that subdivision, and I have to say, in Eldersley, we have a Dollar General that the entrance is on a county road at the entrance of a subdivision, and there are no problems to the residents, or it's just a straight shot in there. You pull right off of 85, right into the Dollar General. I don't think anybody has gone down into their neighborhood, missed the Dollar General. I don't think that that has hurt. It's a very safe entrance. I do it. I say it. I do it till you don't notice. But the road at Mill Glen is not straight in. It's straight down, and then a very sharp turn. And it just continues to bother me that that access. I understand what Commissioner Langston is saying, is they don't even have to come and ask us. They could put a commercial entity there without our permission. But my problem is, they did ask us, and therefore, we have to make a decision based on the information that they brought to us. Yes, tomorrow, they can go and do one of these other things without asking, and then I would say, okay, that's what they did. But they did have to ask us for this. And I still have concerns about the safety of an entrance on that particular county road. Not that it's going into that subdivision, but that particular county road. So I do still have concerns about it.
Any other discussion?
One thing I did want to ask. It states here that it says hypothetical speed limit would be 45 miles per hour. Now, the other delineations that were there that you can actually look at on the website went down by 5 mile per hour. Was there any...
You didn't make that offer. The way the question was, it was if it was reduced, what speed would it be? That's what I got.
Right. And not only concerned, and this is my own opinion, is within being that close to an intersection where you either got a yield or you have a stop sign, 45 miles an hour, or even in the stated limit that it is now, 55 miles an hour, you're awfully close to that intersection. So if the concern was from the radius return of the proposed access point, so if the radius return of the proposed access point, to me means that where they would hypothetically put that entryway, the radius that it returned means the exit or degress out of that location to the concerned corner of that intersection, is the length that they were saying is too close because they've got, what was it, 204 feet of road frontage? I believe is what it was. And they're saying that even if it went down to 45 miles an hour, it's 230 feet. But I don't understand the difference between 24 feet, or actually, 280 now, 240 is like 26 feet. How much of a difference that is at that intersection? I mean, I don't, you know, I don't try to understand, you know, they've got their reasons why GDOT puts what they do in there, in their rules and regulations, but I don't understand why, you know, it wasn't offered, you know, or why if there wasn't anything else that was expounded on, why we couldn't leave it something below 45, just because within being that close to an intersection to begin with. I still have concerns with that as well. I mean, I pretty much encourage you on that as well.
I would think that we all have concerns because they're all our Harris County citizens. I also think we have to go with what we're able to do and the information that we have. We have this information that we've gotten from GDOT. We've talked to GDOT three to four times. I'll be the first to tell you, I'm a associate teacher. I have no idea about the radius and all that they're talking about. I don't teach math.
I was a math teacher, and I know what a radius is.
But I know this, and I've gone in that subdivision probably five to six times. I've been on the little rise. And when the guy puts the storage units in there, he's going to take out some of the trees. So I feel that could be one of the lines what issues they're talking about. And if you look from Mulberry, Company Mulberry to the intersection, there's already six driveways right now. GDOT may be saying, we're not putting another driveway in there because of the number of driveways that's going within about a football and a half length. I don't know. I just know that this is the information I have. I'm as concerned about the students and its people as everybody else. But sometimes, you know, we're related as commissioners to make decisions, and sometimes they're our decisions, and sometimes they're not. And sometimes some people are happy, and sometimes people aren't. And my job is not up here to try to make anybody mad, but I also have to make a decision based on the information I have. And as much as we have concerns, I think that we have gone over this, and we've held off the developer a long time. We've held off the citizens a long time. I think they deserve a decision, whether it's yes or no. I think they deserve a decision based on the information we have. If there's not any more information that we think we can get, then we're probably doing a disservice to both parties by holding this vote off another month because we're not going to be meeting the Fourth of July week, so it would be a whole nother month. And during that month's time, I would be afraid that this developer may come in and decide he wants to put in one of these other things that we don't have a say so on. That's... So I'm concerned on all, kind of like Commissioner Langston, I'm concerned on all fronts, you know?
I will say from prior experience, I built that road, went into that subdivision. We had a time with GDOT at that time, with the entrance just getting very close to that stop sign. So I know we've gotten the same answer from GDOT multiple times, about not doing another driveway. It's my firm belief that not about any more driveway in that area.
Commissioner Zerman, let me ask my question, since you said that you were involved in the building of that road. Every other driveway on that, on 315 is lined up with one across the street. Is that a GDOT? Was that a... Do you know?
You know, since how long ago? I don't remember if that was a specific issue at the time.
Yeah. I just... I had been told that it was GDOT directed, that every highway had to be lined up with ones across the road. I don't know if that's true.
Well, I'll be good.
Hey, I believe I've got an answer for Commissioner Andrews' question regarding the return radius.
Yes.
If y'all care to hear. So again, I'm not a civil engineer, but I can use Google, and so I was taking a look at it, and it looks like the return radius approximates a vehicle turn radius. So in other words, the 90 degree or less or more angle that creates a curve where the car turns into an entryway. And so it looks like what GDOT was saying is there needs to be 300 feet from where the car would maneuver into the entryway of the first road, between that and the proposed access point of the second one. Does that make sense?
Say again.
So the return radius is basically equivalent to the vehicle, the point where the vehicle turns into an entryway?
Yes.
And so it appears that what GDOT is saying is there needs to be 350 feet from the return of Mill Glen Way to the point where you would turn into the proposed access point of the existing commercial development.
Which has nothing to do with why can't we turn in on 315? That's just what they have to do. But once they turn into Mill Glen Way, they've got to have 230 feet before they can have a driveway, which is why they went down the hill instead of doing it closer to 315.
That makes sense. I think that that sounds right, as far as what they're saying.
The other issue is that does affect the subdivision residents, I think, is the 24-hour access to the property. I know that the other storage units there close at nine o'clock. So if this is approved, I would like to put a restriction till 11 o'clock at night. I mean, 11 o'clock is still... I mean, people roaming up down the streets after 11 o'clock at night, they would be going to bed. But I would think that that might make the property a little more secure in the evenings.
Mr. Britta, is that something that's legal for this board to do?
Yeah, so the board has the authority to put certain conditions on a special use permit. And so, you know, it can take the proposed conditions of the planning commission and/or it can add or subtract its own when it makes the final approval.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Yes. There would need to be, though, there was a motion on the table to approve it, and so there would need to be a motion second to amend.
The... I want to amend my motion. I want to... My motion is to approve with the planning commission recommendations of the 25-foot buffer and the lighting that be appropriate. It doesn't affect the highway or the community, so that's... I'm going to take... Is that all right? Andrew?
Yes. Would that include the staff recommendations, and then the... I guess you had a 11 to do them?
I... Yes.
So is it all four?
Uh, well, one, two, three, four, yes, because number one is gone.
Okay. What's the restrictions on hours?
I'm kind of like you said at the last meeting. I have a hard time telling the business owner how. Wendell, rate your business.
I agree. I mean, I did say that, and I still agree with that, but I also know that we need to try to figure out as a commission how to make this work for both parties. If they want to do this, and they're doing this, and if Commissioner Andrews, and I kind of agree with you, closing at 11 o'clock, they don't need to be in there late at night. My great-grandma, who lived in 96, always said, if you're out of your house after 10 o'clock, you have no good anyway. Right. So, you know, we need to try to do it where we're doing the best for both parties as much as we can. You know, and so I agree with that about closing at 11, and I, you know, we're kind of... Seems like sometimes we're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
And my comment to that is that's too much government. When you start dictating the hours that business owners can operate, and I definitely am for less government, not more. That's not being on the map.
So let's finish with the four staff recommendations that are still happening.
So your motion is...
I personally do not feel... I still think this is there. Sorry, folks. No, I'm not sorry. I still think that government does not have the authority to delegate what my business does, what your business does, Andrew. I mean, I feel strongly about that. I feel strongly about rights, and I think that we all have them, and I just don't think that it's up to a government to dictate when a business operates. It's like telling you that you can only go operate your business until 5:00 p.m.
We have a motion. Is there a second or any other discussion?
Do you?
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was looking at, I guess, the amended motion. So yes, I will second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? And all those opposed? Motion carries, please. The next item on our agenda this evening is a budget public hearing. This is our second public hearing regarding the proposed budget. In addition to the first public hearing on June 1st, three budget work sessions have been held on May 4th, May 18th, and May 25th, very much the board, from department heads, constitutional officers. And so we have made great leaps and bounds to the budget this year. We've taken out a few things, we've added a few things. Are there any specific areas tonight that anybody would like to discuss in our budget?
I would like to discuss, and next, I would like for the board to relook the volunteer fire department. There was, I think, there was $5,000, correct me if I'm wrong, that was moved from training, correct me if I'm wrong, then, that was moved from training to repairs and maintenance. I would like to move that $5,000 back into training. I think it's extremely necessary that our volunteer fire department has the money they need for training. So I would like to request that the board consider...
The moving the money back, that wouldn't change the overall number of budgets. I'm in agreement with that. I think we, the more training that people can do, the better off we are. And if that's already, is in there in the budget, we're not adding to it, then I agree with you that we should go ahead and leave that into the training, or move it back to training.
And I just want to add too, you know, as far as you guys showing up, I need y'all to know that we all, well, I do. I appreciate everything that you guys do. Y'all's training, with everything that we ask you guys to do, y'all are out there in front lines taking care of us. So whatever you guys need as far as partnership with us, talk with us. I'm more than happy. I don't care what district it is. I'm not going to make these guys mad. I will talk with you anytime that you want to. If you have a discrepancy, if you have any kind of issues, I'm here to talk. That's what I'm here for. I'm here to represent you guys. Y'all are my neighbors, not just our volunteer fire department, but your neighbors. Our kids go to school together. Let's talk. I just want to say thank you again for what you guys do.
And you guys and ladies, somehow I feel that you're the best.
I'm proud and relieved to have them.
Oh, direct message. I have another question. When we... This tonight, are we discussing the list for rescue dollars or unlinked will be approving to include the rest of the 3.4 million?
Tonight, the board's only approving the 3.4 million already received that's in the budget to be eligible to spend. Now, the specific projects that I've proposed, you can discuss them now, later, anytime.
Correct.
There's no hurry to specify those particular projects.
Okay, thank you. You know, there's been a lot of discussion online, in social media, about how this budget is inflated and is so much more than previous budgets, and there's been a lot of discussion about that. So we knew when we did the salary study that it was going to add about $2 million to the general fund budget. You know, this budget has many different pieces. The general fund budget is the budget that is pretty much all paid for with property taxes. The others have other funding sources, and of course, it's all our money as taxpayers. But the general fund budget is the budget that property taxpayers fund. So we knew going into this budget that we would have about a $2 million increase because of the salary study. We brought the employee salaries and benefits up to the market value, the market rate, which is what our intention was when we went into the study. It's exactly what we did. We knew that it was going to be about $2 million, and we anticipated that from the beginning. When you look at this year's general fund budget compared to last year, there is 1.5 million dollar difference. We anticipated a $2 million difference. So the fact that it's $1.5 million is a lot of money to anybody's, anybody, for anybody. But that means that the rest of the budget has either been reduced by half a million dollars overall, or we've done a really fine job that department heads have in developing their budget. And we do zero-based budgeting. So we don't look at last year's budget and say, oh, let's just add 3% and go from there. It's like, okay, we have zero. What do we need this year? And that's put in the budget. Then it goes to Randy, who cut over $1 million out of the request before it even got to us. So to sit here tonight with a general fund budget that is a billion and a half more than last year's, and we've done the salary increases to bring all employees up to the market rate, this is an excellent budget. It's an excellent budget. Yes, overall total budget is about $10 million more, but you take that one and a half million, and then you take the more than $1 million to build the new water department office. You add the CARES Act money, which is 3.2 million. We could send that money back, but that's our federal tax dollars that they sent to us. We didn't ask for it. They sent it to us. We can give it back to them, or we can spend it on things that we need here in Harris County. So that's in this budget. so that's in this budget. So you got that three point two million, then you've got, um, the, this is the CARES Act, and the waterworks building, and then the T-SLOSS money for the rail to trails to complete that, that makes up the ten million dollars. So it's not that this budget over, is that inflated, it's just that we are at a time where we got this federal money, we have T-SLOSS money, we have this capital project that the water department has saved for, for years, and they're just spending it in this fiscal year, and we did the salary studies, so this is an excellent budget. Yes, it's more, that's what the citizens put us here for, is to manage the money and the projects towards county, and, um, I'm really pleased with the budget, and, so I just wanted to say that, because there has been so much talk about, oh, this budget is so much bigger. Those are the reasons why the budget is bigger.
And we're still at very healthy reserves.
Yes, we are in excellent financial shape, even with the expenditures listed in this budget.
And I have a question for our CFO, do you think that anytime this year or within the next couple, that you think we should entertain the thought of a military increase? Because it looks to me like, based on everything we've done, the way we've been spending money physically sound, the way our SLOSS dollars are working, the way everything's going, it looks to me like that we should be in good shape, because a lot of those things that Commissioner Andrews mentioned, they're coming off the budget next year, when we get the building built, we get the rail to trails and all that. You think we should be in good shape for several years, government, I shouldn't have to entertain the thought of a military increase?
I see no, no need, barring any unforeseen circumstances, pandemics or whatever might happen, no need, I mean, at least, I don't want to put a number on it, but several years, no, we're in good financial reserve.
Do you feel like physically our county's in pretty good shape right now with our reserves and everything else? Because you're the one that has the pulse on all the, on the, what's going on with the money.
Yeah, I don't have any, any issues, uh, you know, like you said, if there's somebody who'd have a headache or heartburn over this, it would be me and I'd, uh, zero, we're in really good financial, this is a shame.
I would add a caveat to that. That's assuming the military has not rolled back. If the military's rolled back or reduced, then with less money coming in, then there might be a need in the future for military increases. I think at the current nine point three four mills, we're sitting really good to be stable at that rate for many years to come. If that rate is lowered, and the county receives less funding, then that might be an issue in the future.
So as long as we stay about status quo right now in this rate, we're probably in good shape for several years to come.
Do you concur?
As long as natural growth stays on pace, and like I said, it's not catastrophic.
No depression, no recession, no pandemics.
Now, there will be people, even if we keep the military just the same, whose property taxes will go up because they have, their property has increased in value, they've been reassessed. So we reassess a third of the county a year, try to, and so in some of those cases, uh, I was talking to a gentleman the other day, and he was telling me how his, um, his assessment had gone way up, and I said, well, you can appeal that if you think it's not accurate. And he said, oh, I don't want them to come to my house because I added a pool and a this and a that, and I'm like, oh, okay, you're good then. But, um, you know, if you, your property value has gone up, then your taxes will go up, even if we don't raise the military rate, but if you weren't reassessed, and we don't raise the military rate, your property taxes will be the same as they were. But we will still have to advertise it as a tax increase if we collect one dollar more this year than we did last year, which we will because of growth in the digest, new homes being built, some properties being reassessed. We will still have to advertise a tax increase, even though the tax rate, the military rate, will stay the same if we, uh, do that.
Okay, and on the budget, um, I've already made my opinions known, and I don't change my opinion. Um, having said that, there are many more positives in this budget than, than the negatives for me. I still have concerns, I still think that we're going to face some critical repercussions down the road, that's my opinion, um.
Can you elaborate on that, I mean, what, what are you seeing?
I'll elaborate on that, I've already talked about it, and I've already said it, I think that, that down the road, there's going to be some repercussions, but there are more positions, uh, positives in the budget and negative, and therefore, I will be voting for the budget.
I just think, you know, if you see something, you need to share it with the rest of us, because, um, you know, we do, we budget every year, every year, every year. If something comes up, then we would adjust that particular year's budget, I just don't, you know, I'm just, I'm not being disrespectful to you, Becky, I just, I want to know what you see, what, what you're thinking is a repercussion in the future from a budget like this.
Is there any other areas of interest in the question?
I, I want to make my, my comments on the budget myself, and as a new guy coming in, and I'm the great guy coming in, right, but assessing this from a proprietary, the private state of general budgets and looking at budgets and forecasting budgets over the years, right? So I see the growth that we see in Harris County, and I see the stuff, the, the rooftops that are coming to the county, and I understand, if you put it low, and you go back and you pull, all the permits that have been over the past ten years, you cannot sit there and say that it's been growth after growth after growth, it's been a steady ingest of permits pulled. If you really look at where the county's going, starting this budget, that's say, five years out, we're not going to be able to make the same assessment. To say that the budget is growing to a point to where there's concern, that concern starts somewhere, and in my opinion, if we want to address that, we need to address what the influx into the county that is taking those services and takes that extra budget to facilitate. To me, it's the onus on us, the budget one hundred percent is predicated on what we push forward in ordinances, is what we put forward to what we want to see this county be. That is my issue. When we sit here and say that the budget increases is here, or we're going to be facing something in the future, you're absolutely right, we're facing it right now. When I look at my budget, and my budget growth year over year, I forecast three to five years out, I have to, because growth is inevitable. How you control that growth, and how you mitigate that cost of growth, is how you forecast that growth. Now, if we go back to the past ten years of those permits being pulled, you don't see a huge growth. You don't, I agree, one hundred percent. But this time that we're seeing today, the growth that we're looking at in the next three years to five years, if things stay on course, and there's no housing mobile works like we seen in two thousand and eight, you are going to see growth that we have not seen before. You are going to see people coming into this county, head county, we've got to accommodate. Services, these guys sitting out here, they're going to have to handle it. That budget's going to go up. We, we can control that. So if we are worried about what's coming in the future, that's on us. And it's just, it's hard for me to sit there and say that the budget concerns, while we're facing that eight million dollar, you know, renovation to the courthouse, that we could have taken a little bite out of that elephant over the years, but we chose not to. To me, that goes back on the onus of the past commissioners over that time period, it just is. If we don't forecast right, the budget won't be right, that's what we've got to handle. That is my concern, and I see it coming, you've got to see it coming. We've got to prepare for it, and we've got to plan for it. If we see it coming, we've got to start that movement now, and that's what I.
And that's why we have a healthy reserve, and that's why we've got to keep a healthy reserve, so that we can meet those challenges as they come. But every year, when we go through the budget process, we know what the challenges are for that year, and we budget accordingly. We raise taxes, or lower taxes, or keep taxes the same, and you're right, we need forecasts, we need to look ahead, we need to keep a healthy reserve, and I think we've done that. And I'm, I'm just, looking at this particular budget, I was very pleased with this particular budget.
Well, that's also why we have started an impact fee study, it's also why we're doing an update of UNFI Development Code. There are things that we have seen before you got here, and now that you are here, that we knew we needed to do, so we have started implementing that. So to say that we're not looking ahead, I, I don't think that's true, we are, because we have started doing that, and putting in the impact fee study, getting that going, we've started doing UNFI Development Code, we're trying to do those things, and I think most of us up here realize, we have to look long-term, long picture, not short-term, small picture.
That's right.
Budget-wise, I think we've got a good budget, it's healthy. With that being said, this is a, uh, public hearing, is there anything from the, does anyone have any comments to make regarding the budget this year? Any concerns or issues, anything that they'd like to make known this evening?
I do want to appreciate y'all working with us, and it's not that y'all had the helpless, of you from a helpless tremendously, I think, uh, Harris County Fire Service has gotten just about everything we ever wanted from the commissioners, trucks, money, equipment money. So I have no complaints there, and I appreciate y'all working with us on the time to get to. I know that, and it's my fault, we didn't spend the money that we had, we spent about a thousand dollars last year for the training, but we're holding some of that money back, thinking we're going to buy a projector and some table chairs for our new building, which, uh, it's not built yet. We didn't need it, and so I guess that's kind of what, what it might be, we didn't need the money, but we still need the money, and we, we always, we always going to need money, so I hate to say that.
And I can see here in a year of pandemic, where I would assume most of your training is in close quarters, maybe that had a little reasoning for less training.
A little bit, but I mean, mostly we've been, yeah, we've been trying to work on a training building, facility, um, you look around, we're not all men, so when we're out there training, when it's just us, it wasn't that hard to figure out what to do, but now, it's just one of us, so we got to make accommodations, and it's not always convenient to go hounding the building, so we figured we'd go ahead and, we took, y'all gave us some splash money, and part of that was, we all agreed to pool, well, our portion of the splash money, we're going to build a building, we got a hundred fifty thousand dollars raised up between all the departments to build the building, so we finally got all the information advancing them, maybe so we're looking forward on that, I guess at some time I'll have to come before y'all, make sure y'all agree to let the little bit of the local county properties. Appreciate, we appreciate what y'all do.
We appreciate what y'all do, thank you. Anyone else this evening that'd like to make a comment on the budget?
Um, it is Becky, I'm one of your constituents, and I, I would like to know your concerns on the budget. I've been Jennifer Riley, um, I, I try to follow as closely as I can, but life's gotten a little busy lately, so I'd like to know your concerns on the budget.
Please, anyone to talk to you, I'll come. Is anyone else like you?
Is there anyone else who has any comments about the budget this evening? Well, we'll close the public hearing at this time, um, and we'll look on to the next item on our agenda this evening, which is a resolution that adoption of Harris County budget for fiscal year of twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Uh, and right, correct me if I'm wrong, but I still believe that our total annual budget remains at fifty million eighty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars, with no further changes to that.
Yes, fifty, fifty million eighty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-two.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I made the motion to approve the resolution to adopt the, uh, Harris County budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second, uh, can you further discussion?
Just want to make sure that three point four, we put it ahead from part, doesn't include any projects that are taxed, just the, the funding.
All right, we have a motion and a second, um, all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is the GDC agreement, capacity care and custody of prisoner inmates. This is the usual annual agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections regarding the capacity care and custody of a hundred fifty-six inmates at the Harris County prison, for which the GDC grants to the county twenty-two dollars per day per inmate. This is the usual annual agreement, which covers the period from July first, twenty twenty-one, through June third, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
I made a motion to.
Okay, so the motion is our second.
I'll second.
And third discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening are two requests for tax refunds. The first request is from Dally Creek Tree Farms, twenty fourteen, had the road Pine Mountain in the amount of forty-three dollars and twelve cents, it says the landlord tax, the reason is paid renewal on two four of twenty one, um, it was due on two twenty-eight of twenty twenty-one, and it was sold on two twenty-seven of twenty twenty-one. The tax commissioner agrees, and the board of tax assessors agree. Do we have a motion?
You want to do both at the same time?
We can do both. Okay. The second, uh, request for tax refund was Dewan Taylor of three twenty-three, board is Rowan Hamilton, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents for boat registration, uh, reason, the boat, boat was sold at July seventeenth of twenty nineteen, uh, the tax commissioner agrees, and the board of tax assessors agrees. Is there a motion?
I made the motion that, uh, we honor both of these tax refunds, one for Dally Creek Tree Farm, and for Dewan Taylor.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Um, all those in favor? Motion carries. Up next, we have a first reading of an alcohol application, the applicant is Ashwani Kumar, the location is A and A C Store, fifteen sixty, US Highway twenty-seven, Patale, Georgia. The license applied for was period wine off premises, it does meet qualifications. The recommendation from the sheriff's office was approval, the health department does not apply, and the recommendation from community development was approval. Um, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, are there any comments you'd like to share this evening?
No, I think, I think I appreciate it, because it was brief, uh, like, that business was there for a long time, and, and it was closed on for a few years, but I agree with you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Are there any individuals here tonight that'd like to make, uh, comments in favor of this applicant? Any individuals this evening that'd like to make comments in composition? None, okay. Well, that will end the first reading, there will be a second reading of this application that is scheduled to be heard July twentieth, um, after which the board will take action. The next item on our agenda this evening is the reappointment of Region Seven EMS Council. Bucky Cersey, EMS director, currently serves on the Region Seven EMS Council for Harris County, his term expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, and it has been requested by the Region Seven EMS Council that he be reappointed for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Mr. Cersey has agreed to the reappointment.
I made the motion that we reappoint Bucky Cersey to this, uh, Region Seven EMS Council. He seemed to have been doing a good job so far, does it repeat it?
And I will second that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is for a county manager to give us some project updates. Uh, Mr. Dallow?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, this is the last visit of my fiscal year. I've had to report most of this, uh, all the program work, most of it has been accomplished. Let me reiterate some of the highlights that are not completely yet. Number fourteen, four replacement consoles and new servers on one, those are being installed, currently should be finished by the end of the, end of June. Number eighteen, new road shoulders brother, that has been purchased, waiting for delivery, and that delivery should be accomplished before June thirtieth. Number twenty-one, wrist drop twenty-five carrying roads, they're currently, uh, the company's currently doing that, and that will be also completed by June thirtieth. Number twenty-two and twenty-three, repair various county bridges, those are also nearing completion, it should be finished by June thirtieth. Number twenty-four, the Melon Ice Down, that is, pencilless items are ready, and that should be finished by June thirtieth. Number twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Elzy Park. Number 26, 27, 28, Elzy Park. That project is ongoing and continues to be developed, and will be continued to develop the next year's budget. So Elzy Park development is ongoing project. Number 30, rail to trails continuation. That project has started, and it will be completed probably early December of this year. And that will take the country, that will take the Rosa Trails, also known as the Man of War Railroad Recreation Trail.
You're getting good at finally saying the name.
That's right. Um, it's being constructed from where it ends behind the Mount Creek Gate to the Calaway Country Store, plus the renovation of the old bridge over the rest of 27. So that should be finished by early December of this year. And with the approval of the budget, Phase 5 is, will be started soon. The technical rail to trails from the Calaway Country Store to Hamilton to end about in front of the, about the, the old Harvard Middle School. So that's an additional five miles, that $3.2 million. And I would say that will probably take about 18 to 20 months to fully complete it. Number 32, wooden poles and soccer lots at the soccer complex. That project has historic construction, and that should be finished by the end of this month. Number 38, water lines and paddling. That project is, uh, again proceeding and will continue until the next budget year. Number 39, water meter replacement project. All of that project are 80% finished, and that will continue to the new budget year. Number 41, a new waterworks administration building. That project is ongoing, and that project will also continue at the next budget year. Number 46, renovating the old library into a Marshall Medical Clinic. The bed opening was earlier this year. The board approved their portion to repair the roof and HVAC system, and that project is ongoing. And that should be completed by December, late December this year. Number 47, that did the county's land use codes. That project is nearing completion. It will continue next fiscal year and be completed probably in early September. And number 51, impact fee study. That project is ongoing, and it should be finished probably, probably similar to this year. And the impact fee study will be to possibly implement that, that's the result of that study to impact the impact fees on the residential development. So basically, a lot of the projects are finished. They're getting finished by the end of this year, and only a few will remain and continue to next budget year. And you can see all of our tax, sales tax collections are very robust and healthy, and they've exceeded, most of them exceeded last month and all of last year at the same time rate. The building permits have slowed down a little, but I predict they're going to get geared up really soon with the development that's occurring. So that's it with the, at the report. We'll have a new program of work next, next meeting with all the new programs and goals to accomplish. We don't have to entertain any questions before we have them.
Any questions?
I have one question for you. Um, you know, I always have to have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at, I, one of our last meetings, I brought up the fact that, you know, we were not able to have our airport fly-in. Have we gotten together with the airport committee to discuss trying to do the fly-in?
Yes.
At some point, because, I mean, other people may not enjoy it, but I always enjoyed going out there, and my grandson loves riding on the Daddy Bob's little train.
That's correct. The, uh, the, uh, the fly-in will be Saturday, October 9th. And the airport committee is getting ready for that, um, setting up all the events, coordinating all the participants, and, um, basically getting ready to offer free flights for the, for the children.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is for our county attorney. And this is, we covered the First Amendment to the IGA between the county and the Center for Rural Prosperity and Innovation, and I think you got Russell.
Yes, Russell. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The item for the board's consideration tonight is amendment to the intergovernmental agreement that the board entered into with the Center for Rural Prosperity Innovation on March 2nd, 2021. In the original IGA, the center agreed to donate $39,000 to the county for, to be earmarked for architect fees related to the, uh, medical clinic at the old library. Those funds have been received and are being used for that purpose. However, due to the higher-than-expected construction material costs, the center actually came back and offered to donate an additional $40,000 to the county to go towards construction cost of the medical clinic. And this amendment to the original IGA puts that in writing for the board's consideration, and a motion is needed to accept this donation from the center.
I made the motion to accept this donation because we'd be probably not very smart to not accept the money. So I made the motion to, to accept this and this amendment to the IGA.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
And the budget just went up $40,000. It's coming in and going out.
That's the last item on our agenda this evening. Is there a, is there any further discussion this evening?
None.
None? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll second, Jerry.
I'll second, yeah. All very good. Motion carries.
Thank you all for coming.